Good morning. Today is Monday, August the 19th of 2019. This is a special meeting of Commissioners Court of Grimes County, Texas. We've had a budgetary workshop and this meeting is convening after that budgetary workshop that was at 9:00 a.m. We're at 114 West Buffington. Agenda item number one, review, discuss, and take action on course language for changes in contracting with the volunteer fire departments. We, as the Commissioners Court, last Wednesday agreed to not renew our contract with the Volunteer Firefighters Association in Grimes County. We have come to the conclusion, I believe, that we are going to renew those contracts, or I say renew, we will negotiate those contracts department by department. And I shared with the court last week some of my concerns and reasoning why is I felt like the accountability of the fire departments was not being conducted as it was contracted with the association. And when I say that, I have documentation that shows on the IRS annual information. And it's not a situation of all departments are out of compliance, but it's a situation of all fire departments are not in compliance. And because we're dealing with an association that has a responsibility to make all of that happen, or try to make that happen, and it's not happening, then I felt that it was our responsibility as a court to say, okay, before we get the county in trouble, before we find out that we're not spending the taxpayers' money as they desire it to be spent, that we need to review the situation and move forward with negotiating, as I said, the individual fire departments. So, we are to review, discuss, and take action on course of language. I'm open for discussion or comments. I will state that I've asked the Auditor's Office to produce information for me specifically on the mileage, specifically on the run costs, what it's been over the past few years. I also shared with the court that, I'm not saying any of the data is falsified, but I am saying I don't know that I agree with all the data. Some of it could be correct. I believe some of it probably be incorrect. I also have an issue that, I also have an issue that on, when the fire departments get a call, that I think it's a responsibility of the chief of that department, or whoever's in charge of that call for that fire department, use some discretion on how many vehicles, how many personnel are sent out to a fire location. I've gotten, I'll call it hearsay, because I haven't observed any of this firsthand, but I've had enough hearsay that says, well, we had a rollover and six vehicles showed up. So I've talked to the Sheriff's Office and I asked what is the procedure on automobile accidents? And the comment was that, well, they show up more than a few times that the Sheriff's Office has had to tell some of the volunteer fire department vehicles, or the people, move your vehicles, get them out of the way, we've got this. So I don't know what the right answer is on all of this, but I'm not comfortable currently that the information that we're receiving as a court, and that we present to the Auditor's Department, or the Treasurer Department for reimbursement of funds, is true and correct in all instances. So I feel like it's something that we need to get our arms around and have better control over than through the association. My opinion, it's my opinion, that the association is not working. I recognize that everybody in all of the fire departments, excluding Navasota, are all volunteer personnel. I get that. I appreciate that. But volunteer or not, they still have responsibilities to the taxpayers of this county, because the number that we've sent out, an average over the last four and three-quarter years has been $529,336. At the end of the day, or the beginning of the day, that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. We also have one area of the county that has an emergency services district tax that's assessed on those citizens. That's up in your area, Commissioner Malick. And I have a concern about those taxpayers paying that tax, and then also, they're paying the $32,500, and also the additional run cost. So up in Iola, over the last four and three-quarter years, the county has paid out $144,061.16 in addition to whatever the number is on the ESD. Now, that's the only area that has an ESD. But again, my concern is, are we getting, are we spending the county's money appropriately? And my current opinion is no. So we need better control.
Judge, I'd like to speak to the ESD.
Would you raise your hand, please? Yes, sir. Would you come to the podium?
Yes, sir.
Identify yourself.
Yes, sir. Judge, I'm Marsh Marty. I am the chief of the Iola Volunteer Fire Department. And I was in the area and a member of the department at the time the ESD was established. Now, the ESD was, the rural fire prevention district, which was established under originally as a rural fire prevention district, not an ESD. Later, the state legislature enacted the ESDs and rolled the rural fire prevention districts into the ESDs. Now, at that time, the people in the fire prevention districts' boundaries, which were adopted by the fire prevention district, that's being Iola School District boundaries, voted to add an extra tax on themselves above the county tax that they were paying to give themselves newer, more equipment than what they were able to raise with just the fundraisers and the little bit of county money that we were receiving at that time. There was not a county contract at that time, a contract with the county. We did receive run money at that time, though. That is why the ESD is there now, to provide that extra equipment, for an extra station to be built, more equipment to be installed, and to improve the service being able to be provided by that department, or by the Iola Department. Now, Iola Volunteer Fire Department also covers areas of the county outside of the ESD. Our boundary map shows those areas, the current boundary map that we have, that we do run outside of the ESD, because we are the closer department to those areas. We have split territories with other departments to get to where the closest department or responding units can get there first. So there again, y'all keep talking about double dipping. We're not double dipping.
That was my term, not the rest's.
Well, that was another Commissioner's term, too. I saw it on the tape the other day. And I've heard that term coming out of this court many times. Usually, it's another, it's an education period to a new commissioner that the people in that area said, we want to add an extra tax upon ourselves, above what we're paying the county, and what the county is doing for the department. It wasn't a instead of, it was something to be done above.
Okay.
With that on.
Thank you. I appreciate your comment, Morris. Yes, sir.
My name is Kyle Braswell, and I'm one of those residents that pays the tax twice for the county and to the ESD. And I agree with your comment on spending money wisely. We certainly need to do that, no question about that. But I am concerned about our fire protection services, and we need those funds. The area that I live in is a long ways away from the fire department, and we need to be doing everything we can to make sure that we're getting the kind of services that we need to the areas that are further away. And that requires those extra ESD funds. And we're paying those county taxes that all the other fire departments get. And then, as residents, we voted for these other taxes on top of it, but it's for a very specific reason, and that is, we need to be providing those services. And I really don't think that without both those funds coming in, we'll be able to do that.
Thank you very much. I also shared last Wednesday, and I'll restate it today, that one of the issues that I have is there's dissension amongst fire departments because of calls going out from dispatch of, this is my area, this is my area, that's my area, and why didn't you call us, or you should have called us first, or... And I think, I don't think, I know that there's some animosity, one department to the other because of the territory boundaries. And I don't know that as a county, we ought to be governed by territory boundaries, if you will, when it comes to the fire departments, because it ought to be whoever is closest to should get the first call to the fire. Whoever's, you know, if they can't respond, or they need support, then whoever would be second closest to should get the call. And so I just, you know, I'm, I get frustrated when I, not just once or twice, when I continuously hear about one department being dispatched when another department should have been, and those are our run miles, and those are our run hours, and we should have gotten that fire. Yes, sir. Could you come to the podium, please?
Judge, I'm Chief of the National Volunteer Fire Department. I see what you're saying about the boundary lines, but for the little money that the county gives us, if we do not have stated boundary lines, Texas Forest Service, under the Texas Legislature law, will not issue us grants. Any grant money that any fire department has received in years will be taken back. As one stipulation for the Texas Forest Service, and I do have a copy.
Well, Chief Mitch, I disagree with the little money that the county gives y'all, because we give each and every department $32,500, and we've been doing that for a couple of years now. And if I look at a number of comparisons of what other counties pay out to their volunteer fire departments, the number is zero. Now, that's a little amount.
Yes, I'm talking about forest apparatuses and stuff. All our grants from the Texas Forest Service pays for our trainings, apparat, I mean, help, don't pay for it, but it pays for trainings. It helps with apparatus purchase, you have to follow in grants. But without a designated fire boundary for, Shiro, Todd Miss, without a designated boundary line for a fire district, we're not, we were not able to even put in for those grants. I mean, if we do not have a map, and I know Katz worked on 911, year before last, when Judge Lamal was here, I gave up territory to Shiro, I gave up territory to Richer, I gave territory to Iola, because we went the mileage from Shiro Station to this. It's not response time. We went mileage, because there was numerous calls that he could beat me, or I could beat him. But it's not about a game of beat, it's, we went mileage. So that's been divided out. But you're at, you're talking about taking, I mean, I know, I hadn't got a trucks from Forest Service since '05. I know there's other departments got, you're talking about taking them trucks and giving them back, and not having no more, we couldn't even put in for a grant. And I would like to give you this, this came from the director at...
I'm glad to have it.
I mean, it came from the director at Texas Forest Service on Friday. You know, to the emails I had, but it's, I mean, it's strictly from the Forest Service.
And those lines actually do show which fire department could get there quicker. I mean, they've been moved.
It's on a mileage deal. I mean, we work, I mean, we gave a territory that we didn't want to give, but we're still hearing complaints about that territory from community members. But we agreed, mileage was here. You know, we went this far, we went this far. I don't have a problem with the boundaries that we have now, but as far as taking the boundaries and throwing away, we're on throwaway, a lot of free money.
Well, and I don't want to be argumentative, but I do want to bring up a point, Chief. And that is, we had a pipeline company that came in, and they said, along with our pipeline, we have a million dollars in grant money that we provide to first responders. And all you have to do is fill in the grant form, and you can get anywhere from, what it was, $2,000 to $10,000. And I got that information out to your association. And to date, I only have knowledge of one fire department that submitted a grant for those additional funds. And I've had another chief say, I have submitted that grant, but that leaves about six departments that I haven't heard anything from them. Did they submit grants or not? And here's my issue. If those six departments that haven't even submitted grants, or seven, if they'd have submitted the maximum, that's $70,000. And that $70,000 is not coming out directly out of the budget money that we have to work with in this county. And I'm going to tell you and everybody sitting here, and everybody that wants to watch the videos, we're fighting on how we spend every dollar to be most effective for you and for me, because this is where we live.
I understand that, but...
And I don't deny that you don't, but it frustrates me when I go through this budget process, and we look at it again, and again, and again, of how we can save money, where we're going to spend money, and then there's the opportunity for these kind of funds to be available, and people don't try to get it. That frustrates me.
Correct. And let you know, since I became chief, I've got 19 open grants right now. That grant you're talking about, never knew nothing about. I would have put in for it. Hold on. Last week, in the Commissioners Court meeting, when Dan said he put in for it, your question was, how long ago? He said the day after you emailed it to me. Well, you emailed to Shiro, you didn't email it to me.
I didn't email it to him.
That's what was said on tape. But I'm just saying, I mean, I didn't know nothing about the, I would have put in for it. It's free money.
Correct.
And I did not know anything about the grant whatsoever. If you got the information, I'll put in for it, but I mean, I'm just saying, knew nothing about the pipeline grant. I have 19 open applications right now for grants. I put in one last night. So it's not that we're not trying, but if we don't know, if we don't know about it, we can't put in for it.
But you're, Chief, you're confirming, I guess, some of the concerns that I have, and that is that you folks are having, you have an association, and I know the people that are running that association are volunteers, but from my perspective, that group is not working. And what I mean by that is, we send the information to them, it's their responsibility to get it out to you folks, so I believe, and it wasn't done. So here we are in a situation, I don't know that the deadline has hit us yet, but I know the deadlines for submitting is rapidly falling upon us.
Yeah, I was wondering how did two departments find out about it? If it didn't come from the association, it came from somebody. So if the other six departments didn't know...
Time out. Mr. Lilly, are you still here? Yes. Do you recall the process that we used in getting that information out?
Any information that I receive, whether it's from you, or anything that I feel that would benefit the fire departments, I forward it to Joan, who is the president of the association.
Okay, do you, can you backtrack your, just from my information, backtrack your records to make sure, and/or when that did get forwarded to Joan?
Sure.
Okay. Anything else, Chief?
Not at all.
Thank you. Yes, sir. If you'll come to the podium, please. Thank you.
Court in Oilwood, Richard Volunteer Fire Department. Judge, I want to make a statement that there are grants out there every day, all over the world. With people having to work, and eat supper, and do everything else, there's not enough time to file for all these grants that are available for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Betty Moore. I'm president of the Volunteer Fire Department in Iola. I have not heard about that grant. We receive no information about that grant that I am aware of. I would dearly love you to send me an email so I can apply for that grant for my fire department. I will make every effort. I don't care if I have to stay there till 2:00 in the morning to get the paperwork filled out. Would you be kind enough to send that to me?
I will make sure.
Because we use those funds to better our equipment, to train our people, send them to Teaks and any other fire school we can to better the training.
And this particular grant was for training and equipment, those kind of things, and the lady from the pipeline company that came and shared the information, I want to quote her, I can't spell it, but she said, "It's easy-peasy to file for this grant."
Okay. My email that I respond to...
I'm going to ask if you will, give it to David Lilly, because he's going to have the original information, and I'm sure that, David, would you be okay to send the information to the Iola Fire Department?
Because at this moment, we have a young man who just finished his last training at Teaks, I mean, for the highest level. He's about to take the test for certification of a firefighter, and we're very proud of him. And I would like more of our young people to have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, when you first brought the matter up last week, I have in my notes where you were saying you were receiving complaints about boundaries. And you also stated that maybe the Sheriff's Office dispatch made the decision on those calls. And I want to say that I think that a person sitting at a dispatch center trying to make a determination without boundaries, who should I call, could become a complicated matter. I think they already have enough stress trying to dispatch whoever they need to dispatch. Those boundary lines were signed off, if I make no mistake, by each chief in here. Y'all met, discussed, and they signed off and modified. I have what was given to us recently about those boundary lines. But to remove boundary lines, not only does it hinder our fire departments from receiving additional grants from the Texas Forestry Service, but it also would put an added stress on a dispatch who is already under pressure trying to make a determination. They also have structured fire protocols, for lack of a better word, on who goes to what. You also have one for grass fire, if I make no mistake, and the protocols on that. And if I make no mistake, y'all, in your association, meetings, or whatever meetings you have, or whatever meeting you signed off on this on, they were all involved in signing off on that. So I think structure is good. I don't, I don't think it's something we need to put on the sheriff department, because they already have enough pressure when you're sitting at that desk, making a call.
Well, Commissioner, I don't mind protocols being followed, or having protocols. My issue is when they're not followed. And the point that I'm trying to make is that when you have four or five vehicles dispatched immediately to a grass fire, and granted, that grass fire could turn into a forest fire, but it should be the responsibility of whoever gets out there first says, I can take care of it, or send a tank truck, we're going to need some additional water out here, but we get the call, and then four or five vehicles roll, all at that moment's notice...
Well, if I make no mistake, they have mutual aid in place, and most of the time, it's based on a structured fire. Two departments go out.
Go out for a structure.
As far as grass fires, I think they have a line of, like, first call goes to this one, second call would go out to that one. And those protocols are there, and they're there for a reason. And if somebody is in disagreement with them, the department signed off, the chief signed off. Now, to say, I think I hear you adding another element in there when you're saying, well, they get there first, and they're calling these trucks. You're doing two things in there. You're talking about boundaries, and then you're talking about run calls, too, the cost of run calls. So my point is, I'm speaking to boundaries. And I think that it's a good thing to have boundaries. A lot of hard work has gone into creating these boundaries, and if at that time, or if it needs to be revisited, then revisit it, but don't remove the boundaries.
Well, I've never said do away with the boundaries. I've asked Katz, and Katz is putting together, correct me if I'm wrong, but a map that shows businesses and residences throughout the county. So it might be a redistribution of what, who's supposed to respond first to a particular area. And my thought was that, you know, we've got rigid boundaries, you know, and that's fine, but we need to take a look at those boundaries. Is it territory? Is it people? What are we trying to say?
I think I heard you spoke to it earlier, because...
It was based on mileage, or it may not be necessarily response time, but it's, that's as close as you can get to response time, would be those boundaries, or actual mileage from station. And the boundary is the, basically, the same distance between stations.
Okay.
As far as the units coming out to a fire, it's my understanding from the meetings that I attended, the first fire person on the scene is supposed to make the assessment, and then call back and let them know what they need at that point. And I think that's what the judge is alluding to. We're getting six trucks out there when we may not need but two. When that first person gets there, they're supposed to assess that situation, and call back and let them know what additional help that they need.
So call back to dispatch, just to be clear?
Yes.
Call back to dispatch?
Yes.
And then dispatch is told whether to dispatch somebody else?
I think that's in the SOPs that they have developed, and obviously, that's not happening.
Chief, are you going to add clarity?
I would like to add some clarity to the, both the boundaries and to the number of units. We have a... Once again, for the record, Chief Marsh Marty with Iowa Volunteer Fire Department. One of the issues with rolling several units to a scene is travel time. We've got to get them rolling out. Now, you're correct, the first unit on the scene is supposed to assess things and disregard whatever units that are not needed, or call for more from another responding, mutilating department, if needed.
Now, when you turn back, vehicles are telling them to stop, do you call your department?
Typically, personally, typically, I will contact directly to the units rolling in.
Okay. And if you, and if you need more units, do you contact dispatch for more?
I'll contact dispatch for more units. Because at that point in time, usually, I'm either calling for a second page out of my department, or I'm calling for a mutual aid department. So I'll have dispatch redo that, either way. Yes, the boundaries there are based on distance, as we've discussed, and they, we do use a hard boundary. Every three years, through the association, the chiefs get together, which is still the need for the association. We need a place that chiefs can get together. And we revisit the boundary lines. Yes, they are on territory, because, you know, I can't change what it, what industries or number of people that move into my territory. Neither can Chief Dickers, neither can Chief Sheridan, neither can the Chief of Todd Mission, or any of the other chiefs. We deal with what we have. We're all departments with highly trained and certified personnel that can respond to any scene. We are also volunteers. Normally, we do have to respond from someplace away from our station. Once in a while, you get a call when you, when you get personnel at the station for a training, or you just returned in from one call, and you get a second call rolling back out. We get those all the time. There's times we've been on calls where we're on a call and get a second call. I believe Shiro had one of those just last week, you know? And we had to have to operate multiple calls. But yes, also, by the SOPs that are laid out through the association, a... a fire department member cannot pass a station. And if there's a piece of, if I have to drive by one of my stations and I have a piece of equipment in that station, I have to pick up that piece of equipment instead of traveling onto the scene in my personal vehicle. There are two reasons that we require that. One, we may need that piece of equipment, and you're the guy that can roll it out there. Two is insurance and liability on driving the personal vehicle to the scene. Anytime a fire department is toned out, that chief becomes personally liable for every vehicle, private or department, that's rolling out. We're responsible for every personnel. If a guy trips going off his front porch, guess who's responsible for that? I am. He may not even on the scene. He tripped on his own property. I'm responsible for that person at that time because he's responding to a fire. So there's a lot of liability that's assumed. And a lot of times, personal vehicle versus the others. But still, again, first on the unit starts disregarding, I'll disregard trucks, and I will ask people to come in their personal vehicles to a scene if I just need them and I don't need the extra trucks. But at the same time, on a car wreck, I don't want three trucks of mine showing up, one with the rescue gear, two to help control traffic, and have 10 POBs on the scene, privately on vehicles, on the scene. I won't, y'all, that's not a good thing to have either because then you're exposing all their vehicles to a liability.
Sure.
So I just, like I said, I wanted to speak to the court on that and try to add some clarity. I don't know if I did. I may have added more mud than clarity.
You mentioned the area of accidents and things of that sort, and I appreciate the response. But, you know, is that the fire department's call, or is that the sheriff's office's call? We need units out here to help direct traffic and control traffic.
The way that the SOPs are spelled out, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if I've made an error, is fire departments are supposed to be called to an accident scene. There are multiple hazard issues that can arise at an accident scene. We don't go to all of them. But the first requirement for a fire department is to help assist the EMS on the scene. The first is extraction. If somebody's...
Is your department extraction certified?
Yes, we are.
Are all departments?
We were one of the first departments in the county.
Are all departments within the county's extraction certified?
So far as I am aware of, yes, sir.
It's not my understanding.
I do not know of one that is not. I have, we've done joint training with departments on extraction cert, on having at least Level One certification. And yes.
But Chief, I guess that kind of summarizes my concern. I don't know for sure. You don't know for sure. The association doesn't know for sure. We've got to get our arms around this. Somebody has got to know. And that's why the suggestion last week was that, okay, everybody in the volunteer fire department is a voluntary. I get that. I understand that, and I appreciate that. I served in a volunteer fire department when I was young enough to do so. I felt like I was.
I'm still young enough, sir.
Thank you. But that's a matter of opinion. But the point is, and I know these folks are all on a voluntary basis, but we're spending a lot of money. We need to make sure that every dollar we spend is being spent to the best advantage for the protection of our citizens. There needs to be accountability in how that money's spent. That's why we have an auditing department, and we have a dedicated auditor that will regularly audit books of the fire department, the accounts where we give, I say give, where we budget monies to. And again, we do $32,500 plus run costs, plus hours. So we're doing a lot of plus-plus, and as I quoted, the number over a half a million dollars. And I'm not saying we shouldn't assist the volunteer fire departments, but I'm telling you, there are plenty of counties around the state that don't give anything to the volunteer fire departments. They fend for themselves.
And a lot of those volunteer fire departments that are fending for themselves cannot provide the services that any one of these departments in this room can provide.
And again, Chief, I'm not suggesting that the departments fend for themselves. But what I am suggesting is that we, as a commissioner's court, have to have accountability for how those tax dollars are being spent.
And I understand and agree.
The requests that came in this year from all of the departments collectively is they want the $32,500 to go to $40,000.
Yes, sir.
We don't have a money tree, or if it did, somebody dug it up and moved it.
And at the time we filed that request, we were also assuming that we would have a workshop to discuss that request. And we did not have that workshop.
Well, we're not totally convinced, but we're somewhat of the opinion we probably need to take each fire department and treat them like they're another department within the county and say, "Okay, submit your budget, and then we approve it or we disapprove it based on what are the needs of that fire department." I mean, you folks have fundraisers to help generate extra capital, and I've been to multiple of those fundraisers.
You've been to at least one for every department, probably.
Well, I've tried to. I don't know that I can say I've been to one for everyone, but I try. And I know the citizens in those particular areas support them very well. But at the end of the day, as a court, we are responsible for the tax dollars that are submitted to us and how we spend them.
Well, Judge, I just want to say this. Part of the reason for doing the way the contract was originally set out was to provide and to keep infighting amongst the departments to a minimum.
I don't think that's worked very well.
It has up till recently. The association and the county is going through a great, growing pains over the last few years. We've added two new departments in the last few years. And that's just growing pains that are happening. If you were to add a new department to the county government, you would see that some of that issue going on in the county government.
Sure.
And that's what's going on here. The territory issues, most of that's been settled out here in the last few weeks. Todd Mission's come off of probation. They're not getting the dual tones that they were getting. They were having to run with a probationary oversight department. So now, you know, that's settled out. So you shouldn't hear some of those issues you heard. As far as bickering over one department intruding into another department's territory, for the most part, that doesn't happen. There have been times Anderson's been called into mine, and I roll over and I say, "I'm glad I get it," and I get to go back to sleep.
Chief, I've had complaints out of the sheriff's office via their dispatch where during an emergency situation, they've had a chief call in during that situation and complain about who was toned out.
And that needs to be dealt with, with that chief.
That, okay, but what I'm, how this all got started was my thinking that, okay, the volunteers are volunteers. I get that. But the association, also a volunteer association, is not working in the way it's supposed to for the county. And I don't begrudge those people that have taken that extra duty and responsibility. I don't begrudge them at all. But I understand between school and trying to make a living and taking care of yourself and your family and all of that, they don't have the time for all of that. Well, then the county has to take responsibility. So my thought was, all right, we'll put a fire marshal in and let that fire marshal be the one who takes charge of all of the individual fire departments. Because I can't fire volunteers, don't want to fire volunteers. But if we have a paid employee and they have duties and responsibilities, if they have standing operating procedures and protocol they need to follow and grant information they need to get out, and they don't, then we, as a commissioner's court, have some authority to either make some changes to get it done by finding somebody that will comply with the job.
More like a contract administrator instead of necessarily a fire marshal. But that's a whole nother subject on the agenda than when I came up here to speak.
But, I mean, I appreciate your comments very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Keith Gilbert, the Assistant Administrative Chief with Whitehall Fire Department. Over the past several minutes, my presentation has been altered quite a bit. And I think that just the past few comments, we can clearly see that the GCFFA is a huge failure.
What's the GCFFA?
That's the Grimes County Firefighters Association.
Okay, sir.
Whitehall, Todd Mission, Shiro, while I cannot speak for them, I can tell you that Whitehall, Todd Mission communicates daily. Todd Mission, Shiro communicates daily. Even before your meeting last Wednesday, we had all decided that we were going to start having regular meetings amongst ourselves to discuss training and to have mutual training together so when we get to mutual aid scenes together, we will automatically work as a team. And the reason why we're doing that is because that has not been happening. The GCFFA has failed that. Your Honor, you made several statements in your Wednesday meeting. I watched that video three times to the last night.
You have a boring life.
It's very, we're very passionate about this. We're very passionate about this, and for us, it's not about money. The only thing we care about money for is to be able to operate our equipment, maintain our equipment, to provide the service for the people that we are dedicated to helping.
And you all have to know, we're appreciative of that.
Right, and we do. And just to a brief point, so I'm going to kind of start what I was intending to state, but then I'm going to deviate to what I think needs to be addressed. You talked about mileage and hours with the reimbursement, that's the run reimbursement. You talked about training records. You talked about IRS filings. Talked about 501(c)(3) compliance. You talked about boundary disputes. We, meaning Whitehall, Todd Mission, Shiro, don't disagree with you. We agree with you 100% on all of that, especially the training records, the boundary disputes. And here's where I'm going to diverge. It's important to note, you heard the Chief of Iowa made comment that over the past few years, we had two new departments, Whitehall and now Todd Mission. When Whitehall first applied, we were resisted tremendously. That's why our patch has the black sheet on it. When it came time for dispersing coverage areas, we were given a piece of Plantersville and we were given a piece of Navasoda. And it is important to note that we were not given equal distance of who is closest to the area from the station. Today, we still have that same issue with Navasoda. With Plantersville, we addressed that just last year or two, which increased our coverage area to the east. It was based on mileage from the station. This is Todd Mission's current coverage area. That is based on mileage from the stations and who is closest. If you can see, their coverage area is divided up into sections. You can pass that around if you'd like. In each one of those areas, it clearly states first call out, second call out, third call out, fourth call out. Todd Mission, Plantersville, Whitehall, Tri-County. Todd Mission, Whitehall, Tri-County, Magnolia. It's signed off by every chief in those coverage areas with the exception of Chief Briggs with Plantersville. The calls that you were describing with dispatch, I'm not sure if what you're describing was the calls that I witnessed, but I can tell you that two of those calls came from Chief Vickers. And I was standing right on the side of him when he did it. And I would challenge to listen to those tapes to see if he was rude in any way, shape, or form. The call specifically went out, not the first time, not the fifth time, not the 10th time. The first time he called to complain to dispatch about this was the 14th call that was issued wrongly according to that map. And once again, that map was created with the safety of the residents in mind, right? So on the 14th call out, when they toned out Todd Mission and Plantersville, when it should have been Todd Mission and Whitehall, chief called dispatch. He said, "Ma'am, that should have been Whitehall to go with Todd Mission. Can I ask why you sent Plantersville?" He was told, he was told that that is what my supervisor instructed me to do. Chief asked, "Who is your supervisor?" Supervisor's Tammy. "I would like to speak with Tammy, please." He was told Tammy was in a meeting. He asked if Tammy would call him when she was finished.
Can you hold just a moment?
Sure.
Yeah, please say it.
Thank you.
So it's important to note that when that, it's important to note that when that map first got implemented, and if I'm not, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you guys even signed off on it, and it was distributed by 911 dispatch, and it was put into the sheriff's office.
I'm not sure who all signed off. I have a signed off, but...
So the first two call outs after this was implemented went off, no problem. Todd Mission was called out to an area with us to back them up, and we did so. On May 3rd, something happened. We don't know what happened, but something happened. And from that point on, the next 18 call outs were done incorrectly. Now, that's jeopardizing people's lives and property because they're not being...
This was given to the dispatch?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, Chief, would you like to play that tape? While we were on this call, Tammy did call us back, or called him back, and explained to him why she's not dispatching us according to this map.
With Judge's permission?
Please enter your password. You have one safe word. You have pressed an incorrect key. To listen to your messages, press one. First safe word message.
Hey, Chief Vickers, it's Tammy. I'm here as well. This dispatch said to you, we're having a situation, our question as far as why we were paging Plantersville with Whitehall, I'm sorry, Plantersville with Todd Mission. Heard these mail I got from Joan. Todd Mission is on probation for a year, and Plantersville goes with them to all their calls. So they finally select both of them. I called the chief green, and he said, "If you have any questions to get with Joan in reference to that. If you have any more questions, give me a call back. I'm already leaving for the day." So if you want to call back on Monday and speak with Chief Green, he'll be here. Or, you know, just get back with us if you have any more questions or contact Joan. Thank you, sir. Bye.
Okay. This call in particular, this exact call right here, the tone dropped, and they sent Todd Mission and Plantersville. He made his phone call. And the reason why I'm saying this is because you made the comment that, you know, that's not the time to be making the calls during an emergency. I argue that it is exactly the time because the dispatcher is, yes, she's not, she's got a lot on her plate, but she's not involved in that particular emergency anymore. And here's why I stress that I think that is the proper time to call. Todd Mission and Plantersville was toned out. He made his call. 12 minutes after Todd Mission and Plantersville was toned out, we got toned out as per the request of Todd Mission's assistant chief. We beat Plantersville to the scene with a 12-minute head start. So I challenge, that particular scene, had Whitehall been toned out first, it's quite possible that we could have saved not one but... possible that we could have saved not one, but possibly even two structures on that fire.
And I appreciate that, but you're talking possibilities. What I do know is that, and I'm not defending anybody here, but what I do know is that when Todd Mission came on board, they were on probation according to the way the association has their agreement for a year.
Yes, sir.
So it's my understanding, if Todd Mission got toned out, Plantersville gets toned out as their overseer, if you will.
That's not, and that's incorrect. That is incorrect. As per this map.
But I haven't seen that map until today.
And once again, that is our association's president's responsibility.
Which brings me back to, I think there's...
Precisely.
A better way for us to help assist the volunteer fire departments the way it's currently being done.
Right. Now, you know, we feel that, that there's probably something going on with this dispatch disparity, and we would like to ask that it be investigated. We don't know, we have made the formal complaint, we don't know what the stance of it is. Which, which actually brings up another issue about training records. You made a comment in Wednesday's meeting that you know for a fact that some of these training records you have in your hand cannot be right, cannot be true.
I've been given training records that are proposed not to be correct, and I've handed those over to the DA's office.
Okay, because that's what's going to be our, our question, because that's first I've heard of it. But we take our training very seriously.
The training records didn't involve you, so that's why you wouldn't have heard of it.
Right, and so, you know, we would, we're sitting there going, no, that, that can't be allowed to go on, because then that puts all of our training records in question, because quite frankly, when people look at this video, they don't really differentiate fire departments. They all look like departments must be like that. And we're not. Todd Mission's not, Chiro's not.
I appreciate that.
You know, so we wanted to actually bring that to the, to light, that, that we take that seriously, as I'm sure you people do. Now, on to where I wanted to actually go with this. I'm not one to bring up problems without potential solutions. It was my understanding that the majority of this workshop was going to be to discuss how our individual contracts are going to look. What methodology are you going to use to determine that? You've stated you don't really like to run reimbursements. We don't have a problem with that. You don't like it because it's hard for you to be able to determine, was the appropriate apparatus dispatched? Or was it overkill? We don't feel like we would like you or anybody else to determine what needs to go out. You know, that, that's for us to determine, to make sure that the, the incident is properly handled in the safest, more efficient manner that can be had. So with that said, you, you made comment about 325 stipend and increase incrementally based on certifications, qualifications, and capabilities. And the one number that you did state was $2,500 for rescue or explication. We're happy to go along with that and look at each individual qualification individually, put a price tag on it, and say, hey, you give us this much money, that money may end up being 40, 45,000, whatever it may be, forget about the runs. We don't care about the runs. And that way, if we choose to send six vehicles out, it doesn't cost you a penny, we're wasting our money.
I agree.
You know, you don't have to worry about it. The other, so, so my...
But you're not going to do that, because you're going to manage your resources better than that, because you're not going to wear your equipment out prematurely, right?
Exactly, which is what we do anyhow.
Well...
You know, that's what we do anyhow. I can't speak for everybody else, but we do.
But I can't, as we've gone through this, we can't speak for just one department. We've got to collectively look at all of the departments.
Correct. And so, we, Todd Mission, Whitehall, Chiro, are on the same page with what I'm speaking of now. We're fine with doing away with run reimbursements as long as our stipend comes up to a figure that we know we can operate with. Average run reimbursements for us, I believe, was $8,000. Plantersville, I believe, was 20 grand last year. That, their coverage area is now split in half with Todd Mission, so that would be about 10 to Todd Mission, 10 to Plantersville, roughly, thereabouts. So you throw that 10,000 on top of the 325, that's 425. That's one way to do it. Another way to do it is actually add incremental value per certification or qualification. The other thing that you discussed was doing away with the GCFFA, which we agree with, and having someone such as you mentioned David Lilly oversee the departments. We would welcome working with, but we would welcome working with Mr. Lilly. We'd welcome that. We have no problem with that at all. The other thing that you discussed was if a department is found to be out of compliance, you withhold funding. And this is a recommendation that we're making to you guys. You withhold funding, but you've already paid them, so you're not doing run reimbursements, so what do you do?
Well, you can pay your 325 on a quarterly basis.
Well, what we're recommending is paying the, paying the annual stipend on a monthly basis. And once that department has been deemed out of compliance, that monthly stipend stops until you back into compliance. So that, that is a little bit of our concerns. You know, we really would like to see something investigated with the dispatch issues.
We have a sheriff's office, we have a district attorney that does sheriff's service.
Right, and you've already alleviated our concern about the training records, so that's, that's fine. And the rest of what we have to say is, is offering our assistance and possible solutions to negotiating new contracts.
Chief Gilbert, appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do appreciate your comments and your suggestions, and we want you guys to work together. We're not trying to put you all out of business. We sincerely appreciate what you guys do. But we, we need to get a hold on where this money's going. And especially with the 501(c)s, because that's, that's serious business there with IRS.
Tilly, you, you created this document about the status and when they went into effect. From what I can see, most of them do have that status. You only, you could not verify one.
From what I can tell, I was not able to pull any records online from BDI's. But I know there was a time when the association was pushing for compliance with their rules and regulations, and their president had requested that the funding be held because they were not compliant. And then she emailed me and said they were either all current or in the process of being current, so we could start issuing payments to get to them. But I just couldn't verify an actual date of when BDI's got their 501(c).
Have you been able to get that information from BDI's directly?
No, ma'am, I have not tried to contact them directly.
But all of the other ones, you verify that they do have 501(c)(3) and one has 501(c)(4), correct?
Right, I believe that's, that is Iola, and I think that's due because they were grandfathered in.
But you have asked the association for some of this information, have you not?
The association hasn't been forthcoming with a lot of stuff that I've requested.
No, but my comment is, my question, you have requested the information from the association?
I have requested various times.
But I thought I heard you say they were out of, they themselves were checking to see if they were out of compliance?
Yes, ma'am. I don't know if it was for all of the fire departments, or if they were just doing that for one that was not out of compliance, I mean, that was out of compliance.
But they were checking.
They did once, yes.
Did once, okay.
But if you look at this data, we've got one, two, three departments that don't show any IRS filings that you can find.
Correct, that I was able to look online. Most of the information was provided through the IRS website. I did talk to one of the fire chiefs, and he said the reason I couldn't pull any of his is because they just recently got their status, and so they hadn't been filing anything because they weren't a 501(c)(3) until recently. So that could be the case for the rest of the fire departments.
Mr. Attorney, can I impose on you to advise the court what happens when we give tax dollars to supposed 501(c)(3)'s that maybe are not in compliance? What is our jeopardy or liability?
Well, I'm...
In the short form?
Sure, I'll try my best. Just go down to my chair. So I think the idea, the real concern is, if you're giving out dollars, and this is the question that you asked me earlier, earlier today, and that is, can you give donations to entities? I mean, would this be a donation? You can, and we're going to set, I'll set this aside for now, this is not a donation. But in a donation circumstance, it has to be a public purpose, and there has to be some oversight by the county, very similar to the arrangement that exists here. But there is statutory authority to enter a contract with volunteer fire departments. Statute just says they have to be incorporated, doesn't say they have to be nonprofit. The issue, though, is in the contract that's been executed, the volunteer fire department is supposed to follow the rules of the association. And you would not know all of the rules of the association, because that's decided by the various departments.
Correct.
And there are multiple terms, multiple things that are supposed to be overseen by the association, but I, I feel certain that there's no way that you could be required to be complicit or engaged in a circumstance with departments that were avoiding federal law by failing to file the appropriate tax return. So I, I wouldn't allow you to continue to be in that arrangement. I would recommend getting out of that arrangement, if that were the case. I don't believe that's the case, but it's pursuant to the contract, not necessarily some general premise of law, or not necessarily the statutory authority.
So it's fair to say the commissioners are not going to jail at this time, under these circumstances?
I represent the Court of the whole town.
I'll be included in that too, thank you.
But as part of the contract, whether it be with the association or with the fire department, a requirement of the contract could be that they maintain a 501(c)(3) status, correct?
That's correct. There's also a provision, I was trying to find it. There is a requirement that you follow rules and regulations of the association, there's a requirement that you provide the association with a certificate of tax exempt status, complete an annual survey of equipment and resources, multiple things that are required. I believe, and I don't see it at this moment, but there's also a provision to comply with the law. And that's the thing I think is of greatest concern, is that they abide by the law. You obviously do not want to be complicit in a circumstance with an association or a department that is not following the law.
Is it in 404.08, is that what you're looking for? About compliance with laws ruled? Is that what you're referring to?
Just tell me that section again, 4 what?
4.08. Page 3.
Right. No, I'm on, I'm on it, doesn't, that, that says rules and regulations of the association, the VFW's bylaws, regulations governing incorporated fire departments, that's probably right.
It says in A, the VFW shall provide to the county the VFW's Articles of Incorporation, Certificate of Formation, and proof of good standing from the Texas Secretary of State, and copies of the current bylaws.
Right, and that's, but that's all the relationship that they have with the state versus the IRS, the nonprofit status. 501(c)(3) is a federal statute that permits you to have federal nonprofit status, allows your, the folks who donate to you to be able to write off those donations.
I went through and, and I noted the things that the association were tasked to do, and I guess in rewording of the language changes, are we going to therefore work on a whole new contract that works for each department like they have? They each signed this, and they each had separate contracts, but will the contracts in general be the same for all departments, just in agreement?
Well, let me start with the basic premise, and I gave you the fact that there is statutory authority, but the statute says the commissioners, court of a county, may contract with an incorporated volunteer fire department that's located within the county, provide fire protection to an area of the county that's located outside the municipalities in the county, and the court may pay for that protection from the general fund of the county. That doesn't dictate the terms of the contract, that's left to you, it's negotiable. I would point out, though, that it seems glaring to me for areas outside municipalities, which reminds us, this is a tax burden shift for local entities who are fledgling entities, have not established a tax base to create their own departments. This statute specifically is not permitting you to contract for somebody for fire protection within the boundaries of a corporation and, or incorporated city. You can do that via an interlocal, but it also is raising the issue of fire protection. You know, obviously, most of what has been talked about, or many times what's talked about, is crashes. And so I, I think you can make the contract as appropriate as you find necessary for the protection of folks in the county, but that's pretty dead gum broad. Those, with those specific exceptions, otherwise, it's pretty broad for you to come up with those terms. My understanding is that the judge was considering, asking the remainder of the court to consider a contract that's similar, but removes the association's oversight and places an employee from the county in that position of oversight.
So where it says the association, then you're suggesting that it would then go to who?
A fire marshal type of position. And fire marshal might be too big of a term, but at least it grabs people's attention that, you know, when there's an issue with fire departments, or burn ban violations or what have you, or mass gatherings, we have somebody that fits under the umbrella of fire marshal.
Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to introduce myself to the court. I'm Betty Moore with the Iowa Volunteer Fire Department.
Yes, ma'am.
If we're going to appoint a fire marshal, he needs to be not only certified firefighter, so he'll understand the procedures, but he also needs to be a certified law officer, as well as my understanding of the law. I could be wrong, but that is my research, and I would say that you need to make sure the person you appoint as fire marshal is actually qualified to be a fire marshal.
We're, I appreciate your comments, and we're not finalized on what we're going to do in that respect, and we're still researching that information, but thank you for your concern.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, if you will.
Hi, Senator Malone, Todd Mission Fire Department. I think the term fire marshal in our future, I do believe that is a great thing for us to go to. I believe David Lilly, being the Emergency Management Coordinator, technically, he coordinates with emergency services, which is exactly what I think you're looking for, is basically a fire department coordinator at this point. We haven't quite reached a fire marshal position, but it's a brilliant idea for the future. There's a bunch of wonderful things a fire marshal could bring to this community. But for now, with him being Emergency Management Coordinator, coordinating with fire departments should technically fall under his jurisdiction. You may consider changing to like Emergency Services Coordinator, if you want, but technically by his title, he technically could be the key you're looking for, which is a coordinator between us, without holding that responsibility of T-CO and firefighter certifications, you know. You mentioned training for Mr. Lilly. I think it would be great for him to get some additional training, especially as far as coordinating between departments and understanding our aspect on things, especially the legal aspect, so he learns how to communicate with us better, how to, how to work with us better. And we welcome working with him. We welcome a coordinator that is heavily involved in the fire department, but I think for somebody concerned citizens, the title of fire marshal, particularly David Lilly, there's a lot of certifications, qualifications, a lot of liabilities. I think if we push for a fire marshal position in the future with somebody who has those qualifications, and eventually to take the place of David Lilly as the coordinator between us would be a great thing, but if you're in a rush for something like that, David Lilly's title should be, in my opinion, good enough to hold him to coordinate us. If you want to change it to Emergency Services Coordinator, more power to you. But that's, that's just my opinion to help, help alleviate what you want to do, help alleviate the concern.
To follow up on that, one of the research items I'd asked Mr. Lilly to put together were training costs for what it would cost to get him to go through. I mean, I went through the A&amp;M school in August, I'd love for him to go through the fire school in August, to see if one day he can even survive that. But, as I said earlier, I was younger when I did it. Yes, ma'am.
TEACs just ended. Well, according to the information that Mr. Lilly provided, in his words, TEACs offer six courses that are necessary to become a certified fire marshal. Those were your words. I am of the opinion, I like the idea of the emergency services coordinator, because he, according to these words, and it was, spent the weekend trying to figure out, do you have to have, what all you have to have to become a fire marshal? I've heard varying opinions. Paul Walla County, talked with someone in Walla County, they just did the exact same thing. He was a peace officer, and if I make no mistake, what license do you hold? Do you hold the peace officers?
Me?
Uh-huh, okay. He was a peace officer, but as far as marsh, fire marshal, they said that they didn't have any strict requirements on fire marshal. So, if he's talking about six courses, those six courses that he has listed is a total of 318 hours. That seems overwhelming to me, for you in your current position and your working. So, maybe, like you said, if we're not able to assign a fire marshal at this particular time, maybe it needs to be called someone else, and he coordinate the groups as suggested.
I'm not opposed to calling him supreme commander, but in all fairness, I mean, regardless of what the title is, emergency manager, emergency management coordinator, services coordinator, but I use the term "fire marshal" to get everybody's attention that, okay, whatever, oh, I got it, no doubt, but what that oversight would be. Mr. Lilly, would you approach? Probably wouldn't want to be supreme commander.
It looks like we've kind of seared into that item on the agenda, so I figure it's probably this is appropriate time to talk to this.
Have we done that, Judge?
But your comments will be okay here.
As the judge requested, I did research this issue extensively, I passed on a lot of what I found to the commissioners and the judge. To the best of my knowledge, in the state of Texas, most of the fire marshal positions that I found, county-related, or county fire marshal positions that I found listed or identified, are full of, like you asked, commissioner, they're peace officers, they're law enforcement, they have the authority to enforce county law and state law, and they also have extensive firefighting background experience. Some of them came like, from fire chief backgrounds, or they serve in that dual role. There's other positions where they have the title of fire marshal, but their duties aren't clearly spelled out, and I have been told that, I've talked to both the state fire marshal's office, and also to Seth Hudson with the Texas Forest Service, who is a former fire marshal himself. There are different types of fire marshals, and it's really at the discretion of each county how they want to assign that fire marshal, to what extent their duties would be, some are law enforcement, some are not. So, really, it's a matter of semantics as far as the title. It really comes down to what is the discretion of the court as to what duties this person would be assigned.
Thank you. So, on agenda item number two, excuse me, agenda item number one, view and discuss and take action on course of language for changes in contracting with the volunteer fire departments. If one of the commissioners wants to take that responsibility, if not, I'm glad to work with the county attorney at revising kind of a standard language agreement that we would use, contract language, that we would use for each department. Again, though, eliminating the, what was it, the GCFFA, eliminating that language out, and then negotiate the individual contracts.
Now, you said eliminating that language, and I guess we were talking about fire marshal just then, because we're talking about what language replaces that, the language in our contract, so I guess we're, I'm still a little puzzled about, is that-
Well, it's gonna be, I mean, it's gonna be language that applies to Grimes County versus the Grimes County Firefighters Association.
Okay, so just Grimes County?
And then we can assign at some point who that authority would be, or who that individual would be, that responsibility, whether it's emergency management coordinator, or whatever we determine. So, if we're in agreement to do that on agenda item number one, anybody want to take that by the reins? Or are you glad to let me have that?
I'm glad to let you have it.
I'll take it, I'm glad to take it.
Judge, if I can help, I think what you're saying is replace association with the commissioners' court, or it's designated.
That's correct. That's pretty simple. All right, if that's the case, then, then I guess, is there a motion for that? I'll make a motion to have the county judge, Joe Fout, to work with the county attorney in changing the language for the volunteer fire departments.
Second.
It was a second by Commissioner Cox. Is there any further discussion on agenda item number one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda item number two, to discuss and take action to determine and assign duties and compensation of the Grimes County Fire Marshal. When I had all of this rolling around in my head, the idea was to eliminate the subdivision coordinator position off of our emergency management coordinator. Talked with our road and bridge engineer, Harry Walker, and he said, yes, he could absorb that into his department. That's kind of where I left that. I did not have a full value of what that would be, as far as, do we need to add additional compensation to the emergency management coordinator position to assume this responsibility? If we're eliminating a portion of his duties, do we increase it, the value of it, by more, by adding the fire marshal opportunities?
You're increasing his responsibilities, and it's a great responsibility, and plus, I think his budget, some of that would have to change if he's pursuing any of these classes.
Well, and that's why I asked him to get those numbers together, because we might have to increase his training dollars in his department. David, I don't know how much of your budget is dedicated to subdivision coordinator. Do you have an idea, or feel?
It's always been a split between emergency management and subdivision, that's how it's titled.
Right.
I would say probably, this is just a guess, probably well over 80% of that budget is utilized in my EMC role.
Okay.
Because I do also collect subdivision and plating fees.
Right.
Not all of my subdivision duties involve fees, but a lot of them, when I have plats, I collect fees for that, so there is some return income to that line, I mean, that part of the line.
Okay.
And let's keep in mind the request that if you're moving those responsibilities back over to road and bridge, he had requests.
But 20% of emergency management coordinator's not gonna cost very much at all at road and bridge. Thank you, David.
Judge, I address one thing on the contract and logistics, as far as what we would want or require from the county.
Chief, I'd be glad to talk with you after the meeting, but we've already concluded that agenda item, we're on the next item, sir.
Judge, I believe there's been some discussion this morning about the actual title duties, and overall job of what a fire marshal would entail. I don't necessarily know that we're in a position to have a fire marshal in the true sense of the term, because, correct me if I'm wrong, fire departments, but generally speaking, they do criminal investigations and enforce codes. We have a sheriff's department and a state fire marshal, that if there's an event that needs to have an investigation, I think we would be able to utilize those services, and to my knowledge, other than the burn ban, I don't think we have any fire codes, per se. Let's not say we won't in the future, but right now, I don't necessarily know, would be the time to discuss those, because that's a pretty, pretty in-depth conversation with regard to codes. I think what I've heard is that we might want to lean more so toward a compliance officer, or a compliance person that would be able to coordinate with the fire departments, obtain the information that they're supposed to be doing on their end of the contract, and also provide some dialogue between the court and the fire departments.
You're exactly right.
So, I don't necessarily know that a fire marshal is the appropriate term, and I don't know what those duties would actually be, other than to enforce compliance, so to speak, or ensure compliance with the upcoming contracts. It also would allow, I think, for the fire departments to have somebody to go to, to give information back to us, in the event that we have overlooked something.
I think you can look at the current contract with the Grimes County Fire Association, and put those duties to the person that we put in this position, because that's what we're after. We want compliance with the training, we want compliance with the filing of taxes, and, you know, that's all in there, but there hadn't been any enforcement of it in the past. That's what we're looking for, basically, I think.
At this juncture, I mean, we're kind of late in game budgetary, with the budget. I don't necessarily know that incorporating all of these training elements that are, that were provided by Mr. Lilly, that's a pretty hefty expense to go forward with right now. I'm not opposed to looking at it in the future, but I-
I think the expense is really the time involved for Mr. Lilly to get, dedicate to that, but there's some basic training that is on that list, that I think, you know, in the course of the next six to 12 months, we could get him to go through that, one or two of those, and make it a bit of a, make it a bit of a process to get someone to that level eventually. So, I concur, concur with what you're saying.
Mr. Lilly, pat his hands.
Judge, can I provide some clarification on that, too?
Sure.
And what you're talking about on some of these issues, like Commissioner Cox and Commissioner Walker, as far as the training and the roles, the training that I've found for fire marshals, which TEACs does offer on a periodic basis, they need a minimum of 15 students per class to even offer those, and they haven't done that, I think, in the last two years or so, so it's very, not very often that they offer them, but they do have them on the books. There's other avenues that I could pursue for fire marshal training, which basically couples those same points, but what I'm trying to clarify here for your consideration is that those two, those classes focus on two primary duties of, that are most commonly assigned to a fire marshal. Compliance, which Commissioner Cox raised the issue about compliance with what? That would, of course, pertain to a possible fire code, and of course, the county doesn't have a fire code at this time, and then investigative, investigation, investigating fires, and in this specific case, structural fires. There's a separate training program that one would have to go through to get wildfire investigation training, so this would pertain to structures. Neither one of those training programs, or those roles, require that the fire marshal be law enforcement again, but in this particular case, if it was, let's say, myself or somebody that does not have a law enforcement background, or would not actually be in a law enforcement role, then we would work very closely with, as we've always done anyway, with the state fire marshal's office and/or the Texas Forest Service, whoever has that investigative capability and the law enforcement capability to back it up. So, I just wanted to clarify that. The training that's offered that you have listed before you pertains primarily to those two roles as a traditional fire marshal.
Judge, may I address that? Dan Sharon, Fire Chief, Shiloh Fire Department. There's a lot of things that, and I think everyone agree, that the fire departments do on a daily basis, whether it's a structure fire, wildfire, extrication, whether it's rescue, wherever it is, and I think those are some of the things that David needs, as far as knowing what we do on a daily basis. That type of training can be done in-house at any one of our fire departments. We're trained, certified instructors, can give him that information, then at least he would know, hey, when I go out to wildfire, this is what I expect to see, okay?
Excellent.
Because that's what we offer. We have SOPs that we follow, you know, in our fire department, and those SOPs mirror what the Grimes County Fire Association came up with. I was on the committee, Court was on the committee, Morris was, and so we wrote those SOPs, so we could actually have some type of a bible to go by. So, that's what David needs, is some way to have a knowledge of what we're doing out there, and he can follow that, and we're more than welcome to, you know, turn over our SOPs to him, I'm sure he may already have a copy. You need a copy, because the way I see it is, is that the Grimes County should have SOPs and what they expect from the fire departments.
Sure.
And that way, he can develop them, and give them to us, and we can go over them and say, yes, we can perform that, no, we can't perform that. And each fire department should be able to look at those SOPs and be able to say, yes, I can, I can give that service. There's one service, which is high angle rope rescue, that all fire departments don't have. Shiloh has that, and we've got, we've got three people that can do high angle rescue, Tanaska, for example. So, those are the things that he needs to know, and I think it'd be good knowledge, if he wanted to join the fire department, we can put him on our roster, and we can send him to TEACs through 2604, and it won't cost you county anything. So, that's just a thought, that, you know, if he wants to join the fire department, we're more than welcome to have him. I'm sure anybody else would be welcome to have him, too. Thank you.
That's a good recruiting strategy, thank you.
There you go.
Well, I'd just say, I don't, I'm not trying to interfere with that, but it could turn into somewhat of a conflict of interest if he were to become a member, and his job is to be the compliance officer.
True, but I'm just thinking on the training aspect of it, and I'm not sure that the county or his position could get a 2604, that's something you might have to check with the state forest, and see if that's it, you know, you can able to get that grant.
Well, he also gave us information on online courses, did you not?
Sure.
And, but I still think that whatever, I don't think the role of fire marshal, Grimes County Fire Marshal, I don't think we're there yet, but I think compliance officer, coordinator, whatever it is, if he starts working toward that goal, he may decide, I don't want to do this, you know? It may be more than what he wants to do, so I think that we could increase his budget to include some ti, you know, some hours, that he can get some training, like you suggested, come to the meetings, y'all are more than willing to train him, but-
He's gonna finish his masters in December, so he's gonna have plenty of free time left.
Well, when you start talking fire marshal, I think that's a really deep subject, and a really deep, a lot of time to make sure that you know what you're talking about when you talk to fire, fire marshals and fire chiefs.
So, let's eliminate fire marshal off of this, so if we did a Grimes County Emergency Management Services Coordinator for the time being, or supreme commander, whatever works, would, is there a suggestion of additional compensation for this position, if indeed all of the i's are dotted, then the t's are crossed, that we'd want to put in this budget?
I don't have a problem with it, increasing.
Do you have a number in mind?
No, I don't, because I was looking at fire marshal all weekend.
Well, Judge, I could, Mr. Lilly indicated-
Well, Judge, I can, you know, Mr. Lilly indicated that 80% of his work is geared toward EMC stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So how much time in excess of that are we expecting? Obviously, it's 100%, he needs to be working, but, I mean, is it going to be 40 or 50% increase in workload if we?
It's going to be an increase, yeah.
Especially right off the bat, because we're going.
He's going to.
Yes, sir.
I'm Justin Prairie, I'm the assistant chief at Todd Mission Volunteer Fire Department. Just an idea of while you're talking, I was thinking, instead of trying to pile a bigger workload on him, maybe you can put an ad out on the commission's website, it's TCFP, is the Commission over Fire Protection in the State of Texas. You can always put an ad out saying you want a compliance officer, somebody with fire shirts, somebody with fire background, that can work under him, or alongside him, however you want to word it, that still reports to y'all, that takes the workload off him, but it's somebody right away that has a basic fire knowledge, that is a non-biased party of this county, so in that way, you don't have to worry about the biases, biased part of it, if that makes sense. But you could have somebody with all the certs, everything, they don't have to be a peace officer, you're not making them a fire marshal, but somebody with fire knowledge, fire background, that they can, him and David Lilly, or whoever, him, her, whoever, can coordinate with David Lilly, and with y'all, and help make recommendations and all that, and then that way, it's not putting the burden on him. And I know you go to a lot of schooling and do a lot, but I don't know that, I know, yeah, because y'all are his boss, he has to, yeah, what do you want to do, say no? Just speaking for him, that's my opinion.
Sure.
That's a lot to put on somebody, especially, like you said, and everybody knows that he wears 50 million different hats already in the county.
50 million? We need to do better than.
Appreciate your comments, thank you. Don't get your hopes up, David. My initial thought was, like a $500 a month allocation, which would be $6,000 a year.
Did we hurt you?
Judge, you didn't ask for my opinion, but if I could, on behalf of Mr. Walker, it may not be this budget here, but just so you see, he's going to be asking for additional dollars, or additional staff, to take over subdivision enforcement, or oversight, or whatever it may be, so just expect that if his folks are consumed 100% now, and you're giving him all of that, there was a time in the past, and we've had that conversation before, where subdivision management was left to the county clerk, who was the person who's supposed to just be receiving the plat. I assure you, the county clerk doesn't want to go back to that.
No, I understand.
And?
Nor do they have the qualification, really, even though they might have the responsibility, they don't have the qualifications. That's why I talked with Mr. Walker up front.
Yeah, and I know he's willing to do it.
And I know he.
He gets consumed by somebody.
He said he could do it without talking to his staff, but it is what it is.
I just, well.
No, fair comment.
I know you know how important that role is.
It is, and it's going to become more and more important as the county continues to grow. There's no doubt about it. Appreciate your comments.
And to your recommendation, I don't know if anybody would want to do that on a part-time basis, because when we take on a new employee, then we take on a load of all the benefits, and I think that you were trying to work within what we already had.
Absolutely.
In our budget, by assigning, removing some of his duties, and assigning him, you know, where he can work more in that area on a full-time basis. I do believe it's going to be a bigger, bigger burden on him to work to the, those certifications, and getting with everything, it's going to be a lot of additional work, but I think I've heard him say he's ready, willing, and able.
I serve at the pleasure of the commissioners' court.
On agenda, on agenda item number two, where it says, discuss and take action to determine and assign duties and compensation of the Grimes County Fire Marshal, I think we're of the opinion, we're going to nix the idea of titling it a fire marshal, and more along the lines of an emergency management services coordinator, but I would suggest at this time, we table it, based on our discussion and our input, and we can finalize this in our final budget workshop.
We can put it on another agenda.
Well, we've got another workshop coming up.
Because we're creating a position there.
Did somebody say free or something? Was that an agreement, commissioners? So we're going to table agenda item number two. That'll take us to agenda item number three. Is there a motion to adjourn? I move with adjourn. Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number three, by Commissioner Dobieinsky, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Oppose? Motion carries, this meeting's adjourned.